29th, 2021 Select Board Meeting, the town of Winchester. I'm Susan Vertick, CEO, I'm Service Chair. I'm here with my colleagues Mike Bettencourt, Mariano Golubov, and Rich Mucci, and joined by Town Manager Beth Rudolph and Mark Too Good, Assistant Town Manager. And we have a number of people also from the town staff are going to be joining us this evening as well. So, welcome everyone. We have, this is our first real public session in November, and then upcoming we'll have a public meeting, a big, a regular session on Monday, December 6th, then Monday, December 13th. And then we are looking ahead to a budget workshop on Friday, December 17th. There's no chair report. I don't think we have any committee updates. We might have an announcement or two. Beth, do you want to go ahead and launch into your report?
Sure. So before I get started, I just wanted to acknowledge Chief Dan O'Connell is here from the Police Department. We had a really just horrific incident on Friday morning in the Winchester Fells. Actually, it's in the Fells, not actually in the town of Winchester, but certainly in the vicinity of Winchester. Excellent job by our Police Department, the State Police and the Medford Police were able to quickly apprehend the suspect. So I just want to thank the Police Chief for their hard work there. And I know Dan had some updates he wanted to provide, so I'll let him step in and cover that. Thank you.
Great, thanks, thanks Beth, and thanks to the board to having me here tonight. Unfortunately, you know, under the circumstances why I'm here is awful, but you know, at least in the end, we were able to find out who did it. But just for a quick update, some of the things that I can tell you, obviously it's an investigation, but you know, Friday morning around 8:26, we received a call. It was from an individual up at the Fells that was walking her dogs. She had come across a woman that had clearly seemed to have been attacked. Gave a call to the station. It was a direct call that came in, wasn't a 911. And you know, had said, you know, listen, you got to get someone up here. We didn't know at that time whether or not the individual had been attacked by an animal or a person. So, units went up there, they were able to locate her. We were able to get an ambulance, you know, up there, get the individual transported. At that time, we, you know, were able to figure out that it was not an animal that had attacked her, that it had actually been a person. So we're able to immediately shut down the area. We made contact with the Mass State Police, DCR, District Attorney's Office. And then within a, probably about an hour, we were able to get out a tweet through the Mass State Police. And then I was able to get it out shortly after that on a retweet on Winchester PD. So we were able to at least get everyone in the, you know, surrounding community notified as to what had taken place up there. We were also able to do reverse 911 here in Winchester to the residents. Shortly after everyone started arriving on scene, I was in contact, right contact with District Attorney Ryan and the Mass State Police. And we were coordinating a, an investigation to it. Troop A, the Mass State Police came down in force, was able to help us lock down the entire area. While the District Attorney's Office, the CPAC unit, which is the Massachusetts State Police detectives that are assigned specifically to the District Attorney's Office. We've worked with them unfortunately many times when it comes to homicides or major crimes. They will usually have jurisdiction and, and we usually will pair up with them and work side by side with them. We were able to get some evidence on scene, which was great, which eventually, you know, led to a suspect. And then which eventually led to an arrest, which was, I think, great for the community. But you know, I will say that I was contacted by a number of individuals, including the Colonel's Office at the State Police, the District Attorney herself, a number of the District Attorneys that were working with the case. Just to say what a great job that they thought that the Winchester PD did and the, and the detective unit too. So I thought it was great, you know, to hear that. So, you know, there's not a lot I can give you for specifics, but I was very proud of the way that the PD did handle it. So.
Well, thank you. And you know, I'm sure we all commend you and the force for reacting as quickly and effectively as you did. And everybody, you know, State Police, everyone else, DA's office. It's just horrific. How it goes out to the victim, you know, may she recover fully physically and psychologically. And may she have the services that she needs to do that. I think the media has actually been treating it rather seriously and well, you know. They didn't sensationalize it at all, that I could see. And that the alleged perpetrator has a history of mental health issues. So the whole thing is, is just awful. But thank you for reporting on it for us.
Thank you. Is there any questions I could, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I was going to say if anybody had any quick questions for you, yeah, that'd be fine. Or not.
Dan, do you want to speak just for a second about the patrols you guys are going to be doing?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, thanks Beth, yeah. We have been doing patrols up there. Normally, it's usually during the summertime. And you know, the patrols that we do do normally are just on the fire roads. So the Winchester Town Water Supply, we own basically from the road down to the water. You know, all these smaller paths where a lot of people do a lot of walking and stuff, they're all usually, you know, from the fire road up. And there is so much land up there that it's, and it's not even our jurisdiction either. The DCR does have people that will patrol up there, they do have Rangers. We do see them a lot when we're up there doing our patrols. But I think it's just good to extend what we do during the summertime into, you know, as deep into the, you know, year as we can, just to have a presence up there. We do have patrols that will go up there during the week. You know, we have the mountain bikes, we have the truck is, which is able to get through there. So we do sporadically send, you know, units up there too. But we're going to try to get people through there a little more regularly, not only on the weekends, but during the week too, just to have a presence up there.
That sounds really good, thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Yes, the weather, the weather, you know, if the weather is good, people are going to be out and, and taking advantage of the Fells. So you know, it makes sense to keep an eye on things, thank you.
And we're starting to get more staff too. We have been, you know, running a little low on staff, so it has been hard to fill some of these open shifts. But we have some hires that are coming in. I'm figuring by summertime, we're going to be back to fully staffed, so it shouldn't be a problem for next year either.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks for joining us, yeah.
Susan, if it's okay, I'll just run through a few other quick items from my report.
Absolutely.
So I just wanted to mention that there is still the open vacancy on the Board of Health. That position is posted and a letter of interest can be submitted through tomorrow afternoon to the Health Department. So if anybody's interested in applying, please do so. The plan is to have those interviews conducted at the next, at the Board's meeting next Monday, is a joint meeting with the Board of Health. One of the things I'd like the Board to think about as we go through the next month is to maybe set up a work plan, working session in January, maybe like a Friday, Friday morning, either the 14th or the 21st, we have a lot, a very full plate, very full agenda. So I think it'd be helpful for us to all kind of get those items out on a table and into a formal work plan. So that's something we can discuss further in terms of scheduling. Another item is we are notified by Comptroller Stacy Ward that one, a longtime Select Board appointee on the Retirement Board is not going to request reappointment. His term is up in February. That gentleman's name is William Zake, and he has extensive expertise in finance. And so he will certainly be missed on that board, but there will be an opening that we'll have to work with the Comptroller's Office to fill that position in the next few months. Just some quick construction updates, Swan Street is still unfortunately closed. We've had some delays with National Grid installing the gas line out there. That work will hopefully be done within the next week or so. I'll be very, very happy when I can check that one off the list in terms of having the road reopened. The work for both the EverSource 115 and 345 projects is winding down for the winter season. On the, on the 115 project, they will be continuing their work at the Wedgemore Station. They need to do, install the pipe under the MBTA track, so they'll be working out there through the winter season. But everything else in the street, we expect to be complete. EverSource will be back in full effect on the 345 KB project next spring. We expect that construction to go through, fully through the, through the construction year and potentially into '23. They will be looking to close Cross Street at some point next year. So that's a conversation that importantly to have in terms of how that will go. I'm happy to report that we expect to be bidding the North Fresno Dam project later this month. So that's a big, big, big project that we had funded by Town Meeting in the spring. And we're looking forward to bidding that project and getting a contractor onboard. And also they're, they're finishing up work at the Morocco School Boilers. So that was one of the projects that was funded through the old ride earlier this spring. And finally, I just wanted to mention that the Board of Health is still continuing their COVID clinics. I think probably now more than ever necessary with this new variant we've heard so much about. The next clinic is scheduled for Thursday, December 2nd, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. Happy to take any comments on any of that information, thank you.
Susan, if I could just ask Beth, just in terms of Swan Street Bridge, Beth, so we're still in a holding pattern, waiting for National Grid to finish piping that line across the bridge at this point?
Yeah, so I think they actually were able to finish up last week. That was the goal, I haven't heard specifically. If not, it will be done early this week. We have our job meetings typically on Tuesday, so we should have more information tomorrow morning.
But they've, they've at least started that work at this?
They have, yeah, yeah, they were out there early last week working on it, yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone have any other questions or thoughts? Rich, I think the, I hear the Chamber has, has changed their approach a little bit to the, the holiday shopping period. And they're going to have a whole weekend long event coming up this weekend, right?
Yep, that's correct. So excited for this weekend. No more Midnight Madness, so you know, you can't use the excuse you had a Select Board meeting and you couldn't attend Midnight Madness. Thursday night will be a kickoff for the holiday stroll weekend. We're asking people to come down to the shops, it'll be double red ticket day all day. So I don't know if you've gotten any red tickets yet, but there's about 25 different participants in Winchester that you spend $25, you'll, you get a chance into a promotion to win $2,500. So we're giving out double tickets that day. There'll be an event Thursday night with carolers, shopping, you know, between 5:00 and 8:00 downtown. Stores will stay open later. If you spend $100, you can cash that in for a prize from one of our local restaurants. So should be a fun night. Then we have the tree lighting on Friday night, our traditional tree lighting. Some events Saturday, including a costume dog parade and other events on the common. Troll, Find the Troll on the Stroll Scavenger Hunt for Kids. And then it winds up on Sunday night with Drive By Santa again, which is extremely popular with over 250 families coming through on Sunday. And Santa will have a small goodie bag for, for all the, the kids that come by. So hope everyone gets downtown. You know, the theme this year is to be a local hero, shop local and responds and comes down many times over the next few days to help our local merchants during the season.
Great, sounds like fun, thank you. I printed the whole packet out and it was a mistake and it's, it's distracting me, so I'm just going to stick with the agenda.
Susan?
Yes.
Sorry, I had a question on the town report. So now that the transfer station project was approved by Town Meeting, like what's the next step on that?
Yeah, so we actually just got approval from COMCOM last week. So we'll be looking to them to issue their order of conditions. We are waiting, I believe, from a final letter from DEP. So once we have those two pieces finalized, we can move forward with bidding the project. And that, the goal is to bid it either later this year or early next year for a spring, summer construction.
Oh, great, so we'll be next construction season?
Yeah, that's the goal, yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Right, so we, we do have the hearing on the tax levy classification. I think this is something we do every year. And we have the Assessor Dan McGirl with us. Dan, I think you might still be?
How about now?
Nope, you can hear, that's good.
Okay. Yes, it's the annual classification hearing. I gave you guys a package last week to go over or review. Once again, the way it works, there are four questions. The first question is, do you want to classify the tax rates? Meaning that you would, you would tax the commercial, industrial, personal property, properties in town more than the residential tax rate? Ignoring the fact that your two tax rates are in because of Chapter 110. That's always going to be a little bit higher anyway. So normally what you would do would you vote one for one tax rate and then take no action and questions two, three, and four, because they really don't apply here in town, based on what we have in town here. The tax rate is going to jump up to about 12, I'm assuming dropped, go down to 1252. In the commercial will be 1190. It's going down because values are going up high enough to reduce the rate, bring it down. Additionally, the taxes are going to go up about 5.3% in taxes. The value of the single family home here in town is 8.3%. Any other question, we have the answer for you. The Chapter 110 also adds 62 cents to the tax rate as well. So the residential will be 1252, commercial 1190.
And that, that Chapter 110 is the cost of some of the?
The water and sewer debt.
Water, sewer debt, right?
Correct. But we transfer it to the residential portion of the tax rate instead of having higher water rates.
Right, okay. And then you also included some data about other towns that are?
Yeah, pretty similar towns.
That don't have large commercial sectors or big, you know, shopping malls or anything.
Right, we, and we just, we're like 95 and a half percent residential. So in order to change and have a classified tax rate, you would save on an, on an average tax bill. If you bumped it up 10%, you'd save the taxpayer 6 cents on a dollar while taxing a commercial business a dollar 25. So it's, it's a big discrepancy, it really doesn't work out here in this town. That's why we haven't done it since 1984. The towns that do have it, one either have a little, little more commercial space than we do, or they've always done it, which would mean if they, if they get rid of it, then they'd be paying, you know, they'd be, they would shift the taxes, give them a, one person a break and the other one charging more, which they hadn't done in a number of years. So it either stays the same like that, or we don't classify. Like I said, we haven't done since 1984.
Okay. Any questions from the Board?
Any specific wording that you need us to vote, Dan?
No, just for question number one, you want to vote to have one single tax rate and take no action on questions two, three, and four, we'll do it for us.
Okay, so I move that on question number one, we have a single tax rate without classification and we take no action on questions two through four.
Thank you.
We need a roll, a roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you very much, that's it, thank you very much.
So we are going to be talking about traffic later on. We have sort of mini traffic study and report and some recommendations. So we will, we will take public comments related to that at that time. And I don't, I don't think Stacy's here to give us a full address report. Is that correct, Beth?
Her report is coming on December 6th.
December 6th, okay, thank you. And so that would bring us to maybe acceptance of donations or licenses? Whatever you have ready there, Beth?
I have the owner for the, the license change, the change of ownership. She's here, I can bring her in if you want to go to her.
This is the supplemental agenda item that came, came across, it was in the packet.
No, it's, it's actually.
Oh, see, okay, nevermind, you're right, I got it.
It's number I.
Yep.
Okay, Solange, if you can hear me, I have invited you, promoting you to panelists. You need to respond. So we're waiting for her if you want to go with the acceptance of the donations.
Sure, so I move that we accept a donation of $300 from the Tustin family. There'd be a Gianni family and Edward and Dot Butler to the Fire Department for the Public Safety Memorial. But thanks from the Board and the town for everybody who donated.
Second.
Roll call vote, Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
I move that we accept a donation of $3,513.39 from the Property Room for the option of abandon an untamed property to be deposited into the Police Department's gift account.
Second.
Roll call vote, Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
I move that we accept a donation of $335.88 from the MCM Thanksgiving Pie fundraiser for the Recreation Early Education for Child Care programs. And thanks from the town and the Board to everybody who donated.
Second.
And roll call vote, Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. So are we ready for the change of, change of ownership and name?
Yes, we are, Solange is here. So Solange, you can unmute yourself.
Thank you for joining us on this.
She, Solange is still muted.
Hi, how are you?
I think we're all well, thank you, how are you?
I'm good, I'm sorry for the use of webinar, I'm not very used to it.
No worries. So Beth, this is, we're just changing the, the ownership and the name for an existing retail, a retail kind of location, right? It's the is it the ice cream store?
Yes, the Scoopalooza.
Scoopalooza, I couldn't think of the name.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. So Beth, do you have any recommendations about this? Do we have all the paperwork that we need?
Yes, yeah, we're all set, everything's in order, thank you. Recommend approval.
Thank you. So it's great.
So that's all I need to do?
Winchester, Winchester needs, you know, we don't want to lose our ice cream store. I think we need a motion and a vote though.
I, I move that we approve the change of ownership from, well, that's printed on the, on our agenda and our packet to Solange Silva.
Thank you.
And we need to roll call vote, so Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so.
Thank you.
Final, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you so much. I hope we'll see you guys there.
Yes.
Certainly will.
Okay, it's an institution.
Thank you.
Okay. So I believe we should move on to the, our business items and the Public Safety Memorial dedication item?
Yes, I think, Patti is Rick Tustin here.
I think I see his name.
Yes, he is, I just moved him in, here he is.
So there's been a new Public Safety Memorial that has been installed. I think it's under wraps currently, but Captain Rick Tustin from the Fire Department is here to kind of give us an update on that and discuss the dedication ceremony that happened later this week. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you, thank you for joining us.
Well, and thank you for having me tonight. As Beth indicated, at long last, Public Safety Memorial is ready to be dedicated. As you recall, I came before you in September of 2020 to gain your approval so we could start soliciting donations. And at long last, and after a few supply delays, we installed the monument last Tuesday. We put the finishing touches on it today and we are ready to dedicate it. We wanted, we kind of moved very quickly on this due to the winter coming. We're going to have a very brief dedication Thursday at 4 o'clock, or shortly after 4 o'clock, right at the memorial. We're planning, and which I want to bring to your attention as the Board, we're planning on temporarily closing Mount Vernon Street from Converse Place to just past the fire station so that we can set chairs up in, in front of the memorial. We've invited the public, we've invited the donors and other retirees from both the Police and Fire Department and from our Public Safety Dispatch. So again, we're looking to have a very brief, about 20 to 30 minutes maximum to dedicate. We will actually try to give it all the pomp and circumstance that it deserves. We will have bag pipers on hand, honor guard, and then following the dedication, we're arranging a reception and, at Lucia's. And we invite all of our town department heads and town management to join us. And I hope that you can all be available or try, we will be recording it. It will be broadcast on Wind Cam for those who can't make it, but we're very excited about this. And it's been a personal goal of mine, as I indicated back in September of 2020, to see this through. So I'm glad that it's finally ready to go. And then that's what I have for you. And again, I thank you for your support as we've moved through this project.
Rick, that's at 4 o'clock on Thursday?
4 o'clock, well, you know, we want to start as close to 4 as we can. It'll slightly afterwards allow for, you know, anybody in Town Hall to be able to, to come over as they get out at 4. And, and again, you know, the weather's going to be a little iffy, so we're going to keep, you know, moving right along and try to be completed by 4:30.
Thank you, Chief. This, you know, was, was a very good idea, really excellent idea. And you know, the, the drawing, it was really well designed. And I'm, I'm really glad that you were able to carry it, carry it through and that everyone donated and that it's, it's really going to be a reality. So thank you. Any questions from anyone on the Board?
Well, I want to thank you again, and I do hope that if you can attend, please do. And I will be sending tomorrow morning to Jen some information that she can post on the Town's website. And again, it will be on Wind Cam for those who can't join us. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we should probably move into the the town election date and the I'm blocking on the name, the Northeast Metro Tech referendum that's coming up, if Mary Ellen is here.
She is.
Yep, I see.
Hi, can you folks hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, let me get my video going there too. Okay, hi, everybody, good evening. Thank you for having me, and I just want to go through a couple of quick little updates. You all are familiar with Article 6 from the Fall Town Meeting, or excuse me, Article 7 from the Fall Town Meeting regarding giving the option to the Select Board to hold the annual town election on a Saturday. That Saturday being the second to last. We did pass that at the Fall Town Meeting. And there's a process where we follow that over to the Attorney General. And we were very fortunate today with some phone calls into the Attorney General's office that they have provided the town of Winchester with an approval letter today. Normally it takes 90 days for them to review it. But in light of the fact that we needed to vote this before December 1st or on December 1st, I had some concerns about it, you know, not being official from the AG. So, so we I had some concerns about it, you know, not being official from the AG. So so we were able to get that done, and Mina, our town attorney, was instrumental in that. So essentially, it has been approved, and the only step that we need to be concerned with is, beginning tomorrow morning, I will publish, per the Massachusetts statute, two legal, a legal notice two times in the paper. We'll send it out tomorrow. We'll have a publication date of December 1st and December 6th. And there's always an opportunity for anyone to file an appeal on any action of our town meeting, once they see that legal notice. I am doubtful that anybody would file an appeal because I think having the election on a Saturday, the community is pretty excited about the opportunity for us to do that, to also be in the location of the high school that we talked about. So what I'm looking for for from the board tonight is just a motion, which I did send sort of last minute, because this just got approved today, to to both Beth and Patty. But essentially, I'll just read the motion that what I'm looking for this evening is that you would move in second that the town of Winchester, according to the Winchester Code of Bylaw, Chapter Three, Section One, shall hold the annual town election on the second to last Saturday in March, said date being Saturday, March 19, 2022. All precincts one through eight shall report to the Winchester High School Gymnasium between the hours of 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM to cast their ballots for said town offices. So that's the motion that's before you this evening. Once you go ahead and do that, that'll allow me to move forward to publish press releases and the paperwork regarding nominations for public office. So I have not provided you with the calendar yet because I just want to make sure everything goes well tonight, but then tomorrow, as Select Boards, I will share with you the calendar so that you'll know what the timeline is. Moving the election from the last Tuesday to the second to last Saturday, that 10-day difference is going to push the nomination process for public office. We normally do it January. We're going to be offering nomination papers beginning December 23rd. So it's a little bit tight, but we're going to do everything we can to get this out to the public. We'll do, you know, our typical press releasing and do our nomination paperwork online. All of the documentation that needs to go to the incumbents who potentially may run for office again, we will actually have that legal notice that I just mentioned to you. That will be down and completed before I actually issue anything. So, you know, all the legalities will be will be tightened up before the public starts pulling nomination papers. So I don't think there's any problem with with the fact that we haven't run that legal notice yet, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I know that's a lot of technical stuff.
Yeah, no, and thank you. We need to know what is really required and all that you do behind the scenes. So there's there's a legal notice and there's an appeal period, and if no one does appeal, then everything's fine. We're just.
Correct.
Okay. And we do that every year?
We do.
Okay.
We do. Yes, the legal notices for anything that gets done at town meeting regarding codes of bylaw or.
The bylaw month, yeah. Okay.
Pretty standard operating procedure. So I don't know how you want to proceed, Susan. Do you want me to also talk about the special election that we have just learned about for the Northeast Regional Vote Tech? Or do you want to take this vote first, and then I can touch on that briefly?
I was thinking it would make sense to take to to do this vote now since you just read the motion.
And we can hold up the screen, too, if you want.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have it.
I think Mariano, I think, yeah.
Okay.
So Patty just sent it to me, so thank you, Patty.
Yeah.
That the town of Winchester, according to Winchester's Code of Bylaw, Chapter Three, Section One, shall hold the annual town election on the second to last Saturday in March, said date being Saturday, March 19, 2022. All precincts one through eight shall report to the Winchester High School Gymnasium between the hours of 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM to cast their ballots for said town offices.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So that makes it unanimous.
Thank you.
Mary Ellen for all of that.
Sure. And as I said, I'll spell all of this out with a nice election calendar. I did receive some some requests from candidates or potential candidates. So I'll get that calendar out as soon as the Secretary of the Commonwealth approves it, hopefully tomorrow. So.
Okay.
That's where we are with that. And then just briefly, not to take up too much of your time, but the Article 25, I believe, of the Fall Town Meeting was the one where you folks talked about the percentage that Winchester will support the Northeast Regional Vote Tech new reconstruction for a high school.
Right.
The long story short, you may have already been told about it, but the long story short is because two communities didn't support it, the statute says that a town election has to be held in the 12 towns that send to that regional high school. So we, of course, are one of them. So I'm waiting until December 9th. We're going to be attending a meeting with the folks at the Vote Tech, all of the clerks in that regional district. And they'll inform us of what the date will be for that special election. It does have to be held be no less than four hours of an election day, no more than eight. So it's kind of a unique special election. It's not your standard town election with a ballot question. It's going to be a standalone, just the ballot question about the construction with the MSBA. I think it's 317 million. And so it'll be a yes-no vote, and my goal is to is to hold it as a, what do I call it, as a consolidated vote. Because it is the regional school district, I'm sort of anticipating, you know, we're not going to have 16,000 voters coming out for that. So I'd like to be most efficient with the budget. To open up all the polling locations to do this one ballot question would be really costly. So I'm going to try to see if we can hold it like I have done the early voting at the Town Hall. Because the maximum amount of hours that we're going to hold it is eight hours. So I'm imagining that it will be sometime in early February. It'll be from 8:00 in the morning till 4:00 in the afternoon. And I'll conduct it with the electronic voter check-in like we've done in the past, and we'll just have the people put their ballots straight through at the back of the Winchester room. I'll line all eight machines up. So I think I can do it in a consolidated fashion that we don't have to have as many poll workers, which will save us some money for this special unbudgeted election.
I did have some inkling of that. It wasn't clear. If there had been any final votes to disapprove of it, and it turned out that there had. And so they, you know, they have two two ways of. Doing this as a as a regional school district, either through the town level or city and town level votes or the full referendum, which is all of the, well, as Mary Ellen said, all 12 districts or all 12 communities. I did have a question, though, because there was something in one of the letters that said that by law, the regional school district had to cover expenses, and it wasn't clear, like.
Yes.
If we knew how much they're, you know, like if they have an amount or what specific expenses, or if you have any any. You know, information to share on that, I think we'd like to know that.
Sure. The only piece that I'm aware of right now is that they will cover the printing expenses. So the printing of the ballot and typically when we use the word printing expenses, it it's also the programming of the voting machines and any of the. Poll pad, you know, anything to do with voter check-in, anything to do with the company that supports the printing of that ballot. So I think what we may be on the hook for is the police detail and the poll workers, although I will find that out. They're having a meeting for the clerks on December, I want to say, the 9th. So as soon as I find that out, I'll come on to the to the next meeting, if you'd like, and give you an update or provide you with a memo.
Okay.
You know, because we'll certainly, you know me, I'm gonna get whatever kind of cash we can get, right? So that's pretty much my update for tonight.
Okay.
Ready?
So I just, if you can spare a couple more minutes, I just want to open it up for questions from any of my other board members.
Sure.
And. Looks like you covered it. So.
Great.
Thank you.
Take care. You're welcome. Bye bye.
So we have an item for. The Board of Health ARPA funding, which I don't think would be a long discussion. So.
Yeah. Pretty quick. Yep. Patty, I don't know, is Jen Murphy here?
She is, and I asked her. Here she comes. She's coming now.
Great. I'm just going to share my screen.
Yep.
This is that update that was provided to the board. So as you can, as you may recall, back in October, we had. An article on town meeting, Article 23, which contemplated the use of free cash for COVID-19 related expenses. It was co sponsored by the town manager and the health department. At the board's meeting on the on October 18th, the recommendation was that we indefinitely postpone that article. And instead of using free cash, that we would allocate some of the existing 6.8 million in ARPA funding that we have to go towards this purpose. These are all eligible expenses. At the time, I think I recognized that, you know, we have a process that we haven't really engaged in yet in terms of figuring out how we're going to evaluate and fund various ARPA projects. Because this one is kind of a critical one, I think I mentioned at the time that we would need to come forward to board before we've kind of engaged in that full review process to get this one funded. So that's why we're here this evening is is to make that request. So the specific items that the Board of Health is is looking for is just over $73,000 for COVID testing, including test supplies, personnel, and messaging. Some money for contact tracing. So I've made a correction in what I sent out to the to the board in your packet. There's been an additional increase in request for that contact tracing. Item to just over $88,000, $10,000 for communication. And so the the total ask at this point from the health department, this is just for activities in the second half of FY22, is just over $71,000. And I'll let Jen Murphy kind of step in and add anything she wants to there related to those items.
Hi. And I do want to add that Maureen Pimentel, a Board of Health member, is also has joined the meeting as well. And so if you have any specific questions about the request, I'm happy to answer answer those questions. However, I did have to, as Beth mentioned, make a change to the contact tracing request. Given what we are now experiencing, the uptick in the surge of cases, I'm hopeful that this won't. Won't be maintained for too much longer. However, the the winter months remain an unknown as we spend more time indoors. And what the protocol will be from the state, I expect it to change in terms of contact tracing at the turn of the calendar year. However, I'm unsure at this point what that will look like. In other words, there may be less burden for us regarding contact tracing, but it remains to be seen. So this is my best estimate with the information I have currently. And again, some of this is could fluctuate. For example, if we see, you know, for example, beyond March or beyond April, the demand for testing wane, then we would obviously scale back greatly. But I did estimate here to continue testing with an estimate of 300 people in attendance monthly for COVID testing. So a lot of this is is built on what I have I have known and have seen over the past few months since July. And obviously, we, I would need the ability to tweak this, whether it be scaled back or scaled up if need be. And if unfortunately, if that would need to happen, I would just, I would come back to you for an additional request.
Thanks, Jen. Are there any questions from anybody?
So I have a question as far as like the the ARPA funding itself. Have we received the funding? Like, is this a transfer from an account that we were already received to the to the health department's account? Like, how does that process?
Yeah. Yeah. So we've already received, I want to say it's like 3.2 or 3.4 million dollars. I think we're getting the rest of it sometime in 2022. So I'm sure Stacy will set up a dedicated account. We're going to have to kind of figure out the accounting side of this as we start, the board starts approving kind of the distribution of these funds. But yeah, it would be transferred out of that existing kind of ARPA fund that Stacy has into a dedicated account for this purpose.
Okay.
Susan. I think the key thing is, sorry, as Jen said, was that, you know, as as we think through how we're going to allocate those ARPA funds in the future, is that this needs to be kind of a recurring thing that we're going to be thinking about. You know, as we go through the the period over which our funds are available. So this is kind of the first request here, and it's possible that our health will come back with additional kind of COVID-related requests. This is just for the rest of FY22. Sorry, Rich.
That's okay. So Jen, you're figuring 350 people per month, about 80 to 85 people a week. Is that consistent with what we've been seeing in in testing? Or do we expect expect a spike, you know, over the next, you know, now that it's winter? I got some questions. Is this enough?
Right. Well, so this is a six-month projection, and so it's obviously, I think, as as we saw last year, as we get into the warmer months, perhaps after March, we'll see demand drop. So this was an average based on what I saw basically last year and the share. So it's an it's an average of what we had been seeing monthly.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I just know it's a little harder to get tests these days would stop the spread, you know, drastically reducing their their efforts. So I didn't know if we need to increase it or not. And then my second question is, I don't see anything on here about vaccine clinics or anything like that. Is that something that would come out of a separate budget, or is that something you need funding for as well?
So I didn't include it here because it does come out of a separate account FEMA. We anticipate FEMA to cover, hopefully all, but at minimum, a majority of of the expenses. And I know Stacy's keeping a close eye on that. So for now, we are, in fact, drawing down on a FEMA account. So all COVID vaccination expenses do come out of that fund.
Okay, thanks.
Mike, anything to ask?
No, thank you, Susan, and thanks, Jen, everyone. Appreciate all your your hard work. Seems like this makes sense. So appreciate it.
I move that we allocate $171,635 from ARPA funds to the Health Department for COVID-19 testing, contact tracing, and risk communication as detailed in this memo.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thanks, Jen. Thanks. Thanks, Beth. Yeah, this is a good idea. This is what ARPA money is for. So that's good.
Absolutely.
So the next item we have is a short-term downtown parking. Report and some recommended changes from our traffic engineers tool design, and I just wanted to open it up for public comment on that, if if anyone is here to comment on downtown parking. We only have a short time, but if if somebody has. Wants to weigh in, this would be the time, somebody from the public. I don't see anyone, and I don't want to. Hold it open too long because this this is an important item, and there's probably a lot of a lot to discuss, and it looks very promising. So. I'm going to close public comment then. Thank you, Beth and Jeff.
Thank you. So Jeff Rosenblum from Tool Design is here with us tonight. We have been doing what we're calling a mini parking study in the downtown area, looking at some sort of short-term improvements we can make to increase parking availability, also looking at the impact of the MBTA construction project, and then looking at some longer-term recommendations. So I'll turn it over to Jeff. I think he has a presentation to run through, and then we'll hopefully have a discussion with the board in terms of the immediate recommendations that they're making at this point. Thank you. Thank you.
Sounds good.
Great, all right, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Great. And can everybody see the presentation?
Yes.
Yep, yep, I do.
Great. All right, thanks for inviting me. This is, I sort of feel like for Hanukkah, I guess the equivalent for parking would be if you put in the quarter and it lasts, you thought it was gonna be 15 minutes, but it lasts the full two hours, that one quarter you had in your pocket. Sort of in the spirit of Hanukkah here.
Thank you for doing that, we are having this meeting on the first night of Hanukkah.
Well, it's actually the second, so it's, oh, okay, we're all clear, all the family actions happened yesterday. All right, so the things I wanted to run through, quick overview of current regulations, a summary of concerns, we've talked to a fair number of people and different stakeholders, the scope of this mini-study, and then the primary thing for today for approval is some short-term recommendations to get something done quickly, and then some medium-term recommendations, a zone, a short-term parking zone concept, and then some discussion. So I'm gonna go through it pretty quickly so we can focus on the pieces that you folks want to talk about and ask. There were a couple of quick changes that happened in the spring in terms of parking. One of those has been the changing of some of the parking that was combined permit and two-hour parking to just two-hour parking, and then the outdoor dining program. We spent a fair amount of time identifying any changes from the last parking map and put together a new set of parking maps. We decided to split them into the permit and the time-based, so that you can sort of think about it. If you are someone who is gonna want permit spots, you can, you know, we can, as planners, look at one map and then look at the other map. The confusing thing about Winchester is some of the parking is shared, so it can be two-hour parking or permit parking. If we look at the time-based parking regulations, in general, most of the downtown area is one-hour parking, and that's something that we want to be talking about for medium term. And that comes into some of the concerns that we have heard from talking to you folks, internal, external, the chamber, on the ground, talking to local businesses. The biggest concerns right now are what is this impact of the MBTA station? Both short-term during construction, but also the change of availability of spaces in the long term. The Waterfield development impacts and just development in general and downtown parking is a key piece. The outdoor dining program led people to really think about the best use of some of those parking spaces to support the restaurants. And I think that was an incredibly positive development. But that highlighted the differential needs between businesses that have storefronts where you need to go in feeling like those parking spaces were taken away from them. And so this trade-off between the businesses that are indoor versus the businesses that could have outdoor dining. A lot of people have reported that the one-hour parking just isn't long enough and two hours, what people feel like they wanted more of, as well as a lot more short-term parking. There is a general concept that people who are gonna be parking all day should be parking farther than the core downtown, just because that's where we want the people who are coming for 30 minutes to two hours to be able to shop. There's some historic issues of downtown employees parking in customer spots, some concerns around commuter parking in residential areas. So in sum, everyone's got something to say about parking in Winchester. So what we were asked to do in collaboration with you folks is to think about this in short-term, medium-term, long-term. Short-term is to get something done right now, which is the proposal that's in front of you. Medium-term is recognizing that there is gonna be this impact from MBTA construction. And so at the end of this presentation, I'll give this 30-minute zone proposal. And then also focusing on enforcement as a key piece of this and looking to do electronic chalking, which just makes it easier for the parking control officers to go around and see if people have parked in the same space for too long, or even if they try to move their car in the zone, it's all GPS marked. So if they try to move their car every two hours, it just won't work anymore, and they'll start getting ticketed. And then a key piece of this is really the long-term thinking. And you have this opportunity right now because, I know it feels like a pain, but because of the construction of the MBTA site, in that in two years, when it reopens, is going to be a time when everybody comes back and starts using the parking again for commuter rail. And you have this two-year period to think through what is the future of downtown parking gonna look like holistically? And piece of that is the zoning system, parking pricing, is it gonna be a key piece of that? Rethinking permit parking, where people are parking. Definitely getting into a fully electronic enforcement system, and then thinking about other ways of getting people downtown, which is part of other work that the city is doing. So the recommendations for today, this short-term, many of these come from a memo in February of 2021 that came from the chamber focusing on how to better support small businesses. So I'll go through them quickly. One is making some spaces in the Jenks Lot. If I have my cursor here, can people see that? So the Jenks Lot in Area A, converting some spaces that are shared for permit parking and for three-hour parking, I think at the moment, converting those, this stretch to two-hour parking. Some parking in Shore Road, making the spots that are closer to downtown, changing those from one hour to two hour. And then there are some that are combined permit, make those all two-hour. Mystic Valley Parkway is currently unlimited parking right now, except for the pickup and drop-off areas right under the letter C. Then a couple of things on Outer Church Street in the area that says D, takes some of those one-hour spaces and convert them to two-hour. And then a little further along, where the letter E is, convert some unregulated spaces to permit parking. So the overall concept of those recommendations would change from the current approximate 200, a little over 200, free two-hour spaces to 30% more with these extra 65 spaces. The permit parking spaces, there's an increase in Area E, but there's also a little bit of a decrease in Area B and A because of the focus on the two-hour parking. So there's a net loss of 10, which is only 3%. And again, we're gonna revisit all of these for the medium term. So in detail, the idea is these 12 spaces here in the Jenks Lot would become two-hour only. On Shore Road, these spots here that say 10 would go to two-hour parking. And then these 13 here would change from the one-hour parking or permit to only two-hour parking, making this entire area more consistent and all two-hour parking. Mystic Valley Parkway, these spots would, 32 spaces would be converted to two-hour parking, except for the pickup and drop-off time that would remain. In the Outer Church area, these 11 would become two-hour parking. And then this next spot along Church here would become permit parking, adding additional 15 in lieu of some of the other ones that were changed to two-hour parking. So in addition, there's been a lot of discussion of trying to increase signage, so to remind people when these changes happen also that when they're driving around looking, that there are these places that do have parking. So the idea would be a simple, straightforward, blue parking sign. It doesn't need to be this design, but conceptually at each of the locations where there is parking, so that if you're driving and you kind of reminded, all right, there's parking here. There's also some opportunities like at Thompson Street, I think this is a recommendation from one of you folks, is when people are sitting there or coming, driving through, letting them know that if they can drive down Thompson Street, they will get to parking. So the idea is helping with some of the wayfinding to these two-hour spaces. So that is a summary of the proposal for short-term. And then I just want to go over this zone proposal that came up for conversation through this process so far. The idea would be to make, again, the real focus on this is recognizing that a lot of people were coming, want to be coming for short-term, 30-minute pickup, drop-off, even, you know, from talking to folks at even the toy store, people want to come, get their gift, and go. If they're gonna come for two hours, the report is that they're willing to go and park it at some of these other lots that aren't even that far away. There's, we're still talking like a less than five-minute walk. But a lot of people feel like when they get to downtown and they want a short-term stop, they want to be able to see and access quickly. So the idea would be to, and this also would help with the differential between businesses that we're concerned about the outdoor dining program, because that's certainly not a program that you want to eliminate. It seemed like it was very successful. So the idea would make this pink highlighted area, all of that, which mostly is one-hour parking right now, that would all become 30-minute parking. And then everywhere else that's one-hour parking would all become two-hour parking. So the concept would be to try to make it more uniform, downtown core, 30-minute, everywhere else around, two-hour. So that is the skinny in brief.
So this is, this is very thorough and which is what's, you know, we need, that's what we need traffic engineers to do, is to really look at what we have and really understand it all. Any questions from anybody on my board here?
Yeah, Susan, thank you. So, you know, from talking to residents and business owners and from surveys that I've read, you know, it appears that the perception of lack of parking is mainly because people want to park on Main or Thompson Street. And when you go to the town center, you see that there's parking everywhere, except for those two streets, right? So I would like to see maybe a more specific recommendation of what we can do with signage to point people to when they are on Main Street, or when they are on the Rotary or Thompson, how to direct them to say, hey, if you go one block, there's, you know, 150 parking spots open over on the Aborigine Lot, or there's, you know, 50 spots open in the Jenks Lot. So that would be number one. My other comment on this is I see that Skilling's Road is not, we're not recommending any usage here. There's space for about probably 31 or 32 parking spots on Skilling's Road that is currently, it just has no parking before a certain, like, I think it's 8:30 AM or something. Since we're losing permit parking, I was thinking that possibly we could make Skilling's Road be permit parking. And if we gain 32 spaces or 30, 30, whatever it is, of permit parking, then we can remove 20 permit parking that is closer in and have additional either 30-minute or two-hour parking to support the businesses. Essentially move the permits a little bit further out of the central business district. And I would say the same thing with Mystic Valley Parkway, south of Waterfield. I know you have two-hour parking there. I'm not sure how many people will park on Mystic Valley Parkway and then cross Mystic Valley Parkway to get to the businesses. I mean, that's, that's something, that's an option that's available today, and most people are not using it. So if we made that permit parking and we get to move cars out of the Aborigine Lot that are currently on permit or out of, you know, closer in or Shore Road that are currently on permit, I think that would, that would also help. Open, you know, I think we have plenty of spots, like when you go and you do a utilization, you see there's hundreds and hundreds of open parking spots. The problem is, they're all, you know, they're not, we're not using them very efficiently. The permits are too close in to the town center.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that is, that's the idea for the medium-term kind of during construction opportunity is to do some, do some rethinking of those and make some recommendations for that. I think the other issue is that a lot of people feel like, you know, some of it is signage, but usually people generally know that they can park farther away and just don't feel like it. So that's why this idea of a zone, this zone system would make it so there is always gonna be short-term parking downtown. No one will ever be able to drive down any of those streets and not be able to find a place close to the drugstore, or close to the coffee shop, or close to a restaurant, close to a business that you want to stop in quickly. And then when changes are made, that's a good time to add the signage. So that's why we were recommending for this round, having some iconic kind of just blue signs that are on the street, not necessarily in the lots themselves, but on the street that direct people to saying, all right, every time you see a blue sign, that's good two-hour parking, and get people used to that visually. For the longer term, for this potential kind of zone, you can also make all of the signs in the downtown area have a certain color, look, or feel, so that people know they're in a short-term zone versus in a two-hour zone. And that really also, that really also helps.
Is 15 minutes too short instead of 30 minutes?
Yeah, 15, yeah, because you can't, you know, there, you can go into the toy store and in 20 minutes, you know, get from your car, go to the toy store, get your toy, get, you know, present, come out. You know, even getting a coffee, if you want to go and meet someone for like a half hour and just have a quick coffee, or, you know, yes, I'd say coffee is the one thing where you could probably jump in and leave. But I think from talking to people, even like the salon, 20-minute nail appointments you can get, you can do shorter appointments in under a half hour. So it seemed like the half hour was the right number.
Okay, thank you.
This is Mike.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff, for all the hard work on this. I know you engaged the community in coming up with these recommendations and really listened to different stakeholders, and it's it's much appreciated. I think these are good short-term recommendations. The only concern I would have is just on that Shore Road, we're converting 13 spaces that are combination permit spaces to two-hour only. I understand the concept of that. I will say that there's a lot of businesses in that area of town. And that lot, you know, typically those spaces for employees are full by 7:00 AM. So, you know, that lot's typically, you know, one or two, three, three spots available by 10:00 AM. So we'll just have to monitor that and see how it works out. Those were transitioned to permitting parking to alleviate some of that stress. Turning the quarter onto Skilling's Road for permitting parking works if the Jenks Center isn't in operation and there's no overflow from the high school, which some days there is, some days there's not. So, yeah, just, I mean, something just to monitor. But I think these are all good short-term recommendations that we can certainly, you know, build off of.
Mike, anything? Usually you raise your hand, so.
I know, I, thank you, Susan, thank you, Jeff. I think this is exactly what we were looking for, for a short-term solution. And I think the signage idea is great, and it's a lot of opportunities here that make sense. You know, I know it's having shorter-term parking, if we reduce 15 minutes here and there, it's always a question of enforcement, right? So, you know, we only have so many people that can go around and circle the block and, you know, at one time. So I think these are the right solutions, and it's something for us to learn from. And I'm sure our parking is gonna continue to evolve, especially as construction in the town center, you know, increases and changes. So this is great. I think the businesses will appreciate this and see the impact right away. So thank you, thank you, Susan.
Thank you. Yeah, I, you know, I have to digest this a little. But it does seem that one of the key things has been, at least one of the key things has been addressed. And this is simpler in a lot of ways. And I think Jeff was correct, people are looking for some sort of have reasonable expectations, you know, to know where there will be spots, you know, where the right, the two-hour spots are that they can find. And I, you know, like the signage is good, and the simplifying things definitely is a good idea. And as you said, you know, the things will evolve, and we can use this period of time during the construction to really try to understand what we, you know, what part of this works and what part of it needs to be tweaked. So, sounds good. So, sounds good.
Right. Yeah, one final piece of this that is worth thinking about is that in places where people don't know exactly where they're going to park, so if they, if they know they're going to try to hope for the best, I mean, we all do it. You go for the hope for the best. You go and you want to park right out front and hope that there's the two-hour, one-hour spot or two-hour spot there. It's not there, so then you end up looping around, hoping to find another one that in studies that have been done in towns similar to Winchester, you can, at certain times of day, you can get up to a third of the traffic that's flowing, just people looping around, looking for parking. So in connecting the parking piece and simplifying and having people sort of know, like, don't bother, if you're going for 30 minutes, you won't have to loop around because you'll find something. But if you're going for two hours, there aren't any two-hour spots there. So don't even bother, just stop off right away at the lots. That'll have an impact on other aspects of improving kind of, you know, pedestrian flow, pedestrian safety and other sort of your other objectives for downtown. So kind of a side piece of the simplification that Susan's talking about.
And I, one other thing just occurred to me, it was in the written memo. I understand you're thinking about ways to notify everybody, notify all the businesses. Can you speak to that, please?
Yeah, I don't know what the status of that is, Beth.
Yeah, so I'm happy to, yeah, I'm happy to take that. Susan, we, we're able to collaborate with the Chamber of Commerce on the flyer that they put together for the holiday stroll. And so on the backside of that flyer is also a parking map that shows, obviously doesn't include these newest changes that you may vote this evening, but it shows kind of the parking spaces available, parking areas available downtown. And then if you vote the changes, these short-term recommendations this evening, we have kind of a postcard flyer ready to go that Tool has helped us put together. And we'll send that to the printer, and then we'll have those distributed to the businesses so that they're available over this next month where we have a lot of folks coming in and out of businesses. They're available to give out to patrons to show where these most recent changes are to the two-hour spaces around town.
Really just focusing on saying, you want, you're going to be coming. Here's a bunch of places you may not have thought of, big asterisks next to them, saying these are good three-to-hour parking spaces. We've added a bunch more two-hour parking spaces. You'll see the change. Come shop downtown. You know, really kind of a focus on bringing people, bringing people downtown, but saying that there are places to park. Here's a map that shows you where they are, and when you look at the map, it's not really that far.
Exactly, yeah.
Sounds good. So if there are.
So, I mean, yeah, my thought is, you know, I'm fine with all these recommendations. I would like to see if we can consider on Skilling's Road, making it no parking before 8:30 AM except by permit, and then move some of the permitted spaces out of either Shore Road or the Jenks Lot. Just open up more spaces closer to the town center for, for customers.
Marian, I think we could evaluate that kind of as part of the next kind of midterm recommendations. Because as Rich mentioned, I'd want to make sure we touch base with the Jenks because I know that the sign is out there now across my high school was done specifically to be able to accommodate when Jenks has overflow from their parking lot during big events. I'm not sure how big their events are these days, so I just want to touch base with Philip over there to get his thoughts.
Okay. Yeah, I think conceptually, you're right. We talked about this in the beginning, longer-term, all-day parking should be a little farther away, and the shorter-term, two-hour customer parking should be a little bit closer. So I think, as Beth said, the plan is to take a holistic look at a lot of these different things and make, make that, those conceptual changes altogether so that then people are like, okay, now I see that there's this, you know, broader set of changes and not one group was being particularly penalized.
Yeah, and Jeff, to your point, Mariano's question, I mean, we've talked about this, Jeff. You know, and I could speak to just the Chamber's point of view is, you know, certainly there's a lot going on in the center, development-wise, and the station being closed. And, you know, the idea is that it's not just the businesses that are burdened with the parking changes, that, you know, everyone that uses the center needs to be equally burdened, and that includes, you know, town hall staff, school staff, students, that type of stuff. So I think, you know, Mariano, to your point, if we're going to make those types of changes, we need to look holistically at, you know, all groups and make sure that the burden's being spread across all groups. You know, not just, you know, consumed by the businesses, because, you know, a lot of businesses, you know, you know, the further that they have to walk, you know, some of these businesses, these people are parking, you know, and they get out late at night, you know, it's not ideal. So certainly just, we need to get input from, you know, the community on those types of changes, I think.
All right, so Beth, we're, you're looking for a vote to just implement.
Yeah, the short-term recommendations that are on the slide here, correct? Yeah.
I move that we authorize the Town Manager's Office to implement the short-term recommendations as presented here and on the, on the memo.
Second.
And a roll call vote, Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Great, thank you. And I just wanted to thank Jeff because I think he's done a really fantastic job jumping in here to what is a complicated issue. I mean, I'm sure it's that way in our rich community, but we have a lot of moving pieces in our town.
Yeah, I will say that your parking map was particularly complicated. You can win the complicated prize for parking that. But hopefully we tried to, I don't know, make it a little more streamlined. But, yeah, but it's been really great working with your staff also, just as a note. A pleasure working with you guys.
Thanks, thank you. Yes, we do pride ourselves on complication. All right. So I'm trying not to forget anything, and that would include that item that came along later in the day. The, it was a request from the Congregational Church? Mariano, do you have that one?
Yeah, yeah, I do have that one. That one was put as part of the consent agenda, so just, you know, whenever we're, the rest, just let me know.
All right. I wasn't sure if it was consent agenda or just, you know, it seems like something that would typically be on the consent agenda, but since it was separate, I wasn't sure. But as long as we all have it, and it's about the, using the common, you know, why don't we go ahead and do the consent agenda then?
I'll read it since it wasn't on the printed agenda that went to the public. So I move that we approve in the consent agenda the following items. A one-day alcohol license for Archie McIntyre for Rattlock Farm, December 9th, 17th, and 19th, 2021, at the Rattlock Farm. Chris's addiction for Griffin Museum, December 9th, 2021, and January 13th, 2022, to approve the minutes of September 13th and 27th, 2021. And the latest addition is to approve a request from the First Congregational Church to use the town comment on Sunday, December 19th, to hold a Christmas pageant, starting with setup at 8:30 AM with the pageant beginning at 10:00 AM.
Second.
And a roll call vote on this, Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
I vote yes also. So I'm thinking that is, we've gotten to the end of everything?
Yeah, move to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote, Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you, Beth, Patty.
Thank you, thanks everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.